Second meeting of the month. I have established a quorum. We have our dear friend and colleague, Frida Player Peters, who is joining us via phone. Frida, if you don't mind, just text me if you would like to get in the queue, if you would like to add to any conversation or add any thoughts.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. We're on and popping. We're moving. All right, if we could have one of our special guests, Mr. Robert Fisher from the mayor's office, if you would not mind coming up to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any amendments to the consent agenda as listed?
Yes.
If you don't mind, hold on one second, I'm so sorry. We are back on track. All right, go right ahead, Ms. Tyler. Mrs. Tyler.
Yes, I would like to pull off of the consent agenda the two contracts with Orion Building Corporation for discussion.
Okay. If you are following along at home, that's 1D7. It has been noted and pulled. Do we have any other amendments? All right. If I could have a motion?
Move approval of the agenda with the said changes.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, raise your hand. All right, none here opposed. Thank you. All right, go ahead, Ms. Tyler. Orion Building Corporation, those two contracts, do you have a motion?
Yes, I would actually like to make a motion to... So, I'm new to the board with this.
That's all right.
I have not been party to every step of the way, and there's a lot more that I need to know about it, and so I feel like I have not done my due diligence on this at this point. I feel like, from what I have read, I'm not comfortable voting on anything involving Orion Construction until I have a thorough understanding. I want to see the full facts of the cases, including details like purchasing orders and the materials that they are required to keep for five years. And based on what I've seen, I can't tell if we just entered a bad agreement and we have no recourse, or if we just haven't done our due diligence to get all the facts straight. I know Armando wasn't paid. I know Orion offered to pay and withdrew it because of a non-disclosure, and the basis I've seen for them turning it down is legitimate. And so, I just, I would like to talk to Metro Legal more about this, as Mr. Cooper in particular, and I would like to make a motion to defer this until our next meeting.
Okay, so that would be a deferment until the first meeting in November, which is November 10th, I believe. All right, do we have a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. We'll open it up for discussion.
I just want to echo some of Ms. Tyler's concerns. I was able to review today the proposed amendments to the contract, but I need to sort of familiarize myself. I am not a lawyer, and of course, we have great representation with our attorneys here in MNPS, but I don't feel like I have had the time I need to understand why some areas that I would like to see addressed in that agreement have not been addressed. I would, even though I understand that when it is not explicitly stated that a contractor isn't responsible for the actions of their subcontractors, that it's implicit that they are, I still think, considering that we have experienced wage theft on the part of a subcontractor, that we need to think about our responsibility to workers and to ensuring that they are appropriately paid and to ensuring that it is explicit in our contracts that contractors are held responsible for any payments due by their subcontractors. And I just kind of want to understand more deeply the legalities of that and how we might get that kind of language into our contracts.
Okay, and I'm sorry, were you done? I didn't want to cut you off.
I would just like to add on to that. One of the things that really concerned me was seeing that Orion was willing to come to the table and then withdrew that because of a refusal to sign a non-disclosure, and I just have to say, I do not think that any Metro project should have any non-disclosure agreements happening. We are a transparent government. We have to account for every penny of taxpayer dollars that we spend, and we cannot have that accountability if we're not allowed to speak about some things. And I don't think that any part of a Metro job should have a non-disclosure attached to it, even if it's between two private parties. I do not think that a metropolitan job should have a non-disclosure agreement as part of it, and so that's another giant concern of mine.
Thank you, Ms. Tyler. Ms. Player Peters just texted. Go right ahead, Ms. Player Peters.
I've just spoken this before, and I just kind of want to reiterate my comments from the June 9th meeting we had. You know, I just think it's important as a board, we make our values clear to those who do business with Metro Schools, and that we expect all prime contractors to adhere to a standard practice, given that they hire their subcontractors, and that's a moral standard and a moral practice, that they use high road, high quality. But subcontractors with any project that's funded by taxpayers' dollars through our MNPS process, and I think we just need to continue to go on the record for that, that we hold all contractors responsible for payments and that, and have to make sure there is a contract between subcontractors about payment, who gets paid when, before the work is begun, so there's a clear, a clear kind of process and line of a way of doing business. And so, I just want to support my colleagues into doing this, into supporting, so the new board members can have the right information as they move forward, so then also to continue just our moral belief of making sure best practices are adhered up in our contracts do right by everyone who do business on taxpayer dollar funded projects. Thank you.
And thank you. Mrs. Puga-Lawker?
I'll say, first of all, I want to thank Ms. Tyler for pulling this off the consent agenda, and I also want to say on behalf of people who have been on the board for the duration of this, it has been a source of serious heartburn, and we have, I think, I'll speak for myself, I have felt sometimes relatively powerless in the face of the legalities and what's appropriate and what we can do, what we can't do, what happened, what didn't happen, and so I just appreciate that we are going to continue to explore this, and I would like to believe we can come to a resolution here where all parties are fully compensated and we can get this behind us, because I believe it's not aligned to our values to leave Armando hanging out there all this time, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tyler?
Yeah, and I'd like to add that we are the ones who create the contracts. We can write in it what our expectations are of the people that we work with, and so if this ends up being something where we don't have recourse, then we need to learn from it, and we need to make sure that going forward, all of our contracts take care of our workers, and all of our contracts hold accountable the people that we have contracted with. So, I just want to make it clear that we need to make sure that we are the ones who are creating this, and it's up to us to do it properly.
Thank you. Ms. Masters?
Yeah, and I think that, you know, that's what it comes down to, is in the end, if Armando has still not been paid, that comes down to us. We have to ensure that that happens before we enter into additional contracts with this company, period.
Anyone else around the board table before I ask for Metro Legal or MNPS feedback? Yeah, all right, then, Mrs. Rivera, if you wouldn't mind, if you have any specific thoughts, questions, something we should keep in mind, after you speak, I will be asking colleagues for any specific questions for two weeks from now, if that becomes the, if we vote to defer it. I would like to make sure that we've submitted all the questions, you know exactly what we're looking for, and we can get those responses as you can.
Sure. I'm going to take my mask off while I talk. I think that there are two separate issues here, potentially even three. The first is the contract under McMurray Middle School. That contract has been satisfied at this point. Construction contracts have performance bonds attached to them, and they also have a payment bond attached to them. A performance bond is for MNPS's protection, and that's if the building doesn't get built, we have a way to be compensated for that. A payment bond is for situations like this, where a subcontractor or a sub-subcontractor isn't paid by the contractor, and they would have a recourse against the performance bond. Typically speaking, the big contractor, in this case MNPS, does not act as a referee for a dispute between parties and their contract. That is the role of either the arbiter or the court. We cannot know all of the facts. We can, of course, pull the purchase orders and pull all of the public documents that we have, but it is not the role of the government to mediate or adjudicate disputes between parties. So there's issue one. Issue two is the contracts that are currently pending before you. Those contracts went through the RFP process. The RFP process is designed for transparency and for contractors to have a sense of what the rules are. There is not a rule, and there likely would not be able for there to be a rule, that based on allegations of wrongdoing, and solely allegations, that you would be prohibited from contracting with the government. So this board can vote how it would choose to vote, but any vote could be challenged through a writ of cert in the Chancery Court. There, the court would be looking at, was the decision arbitrary or capricious? A decision could be arbitrary or capricious if it is based solely on allegations and not any sort of determination. Issue two. Issue three, I think, is for the future, talking about what terms we want in the contract, looking at our contract. So to the extent that is helpful in making your decision on whether to defer or to vote tonight, I wanted you to have that additional information.
Are there any legal ramifications for a deferment tonight?
Not that I see right now.
Okay, thank you. Other thoughts, questions before we move to?
I just want to be clear with what I'm hearing.
Go ahead.
Just want to be clear about what you said. So deferring today, so let me try to put this in people language.
I was trying, I'm sorry.
I know, you did a good job.
I didn't do that.
Other people language. So, we could be accused of attempting to change the rules after the fact, right? If we're trying to make something different with the, under the, this, the agreement provided by, provisioned under these contracts. So adding language about compensation, third-party subcontractors, at this point is not the guidelines and the rules under which Orion bid and received this contract.
Correct, and it's not the guidelines that anybody bid on this project.
Right, okay. Just want to make sure.
All right, any other thoughts or questions before? Go ahead.
Is there a circumstance under which we just put it out, we just redo it, redo the bid process, scrap it and start over?
Again, if there was an issue with the process itself, that may be appropriate, but it would not be appropriate to throw the process out based on these allegations.
What about not based on the allegations, simply based on the fact that there may now be board members who don't agree with the terms of that process, of the RFQ itself?
I'd be happy to research that further. My off-the-cuff response is, again, unless there was something wrong with the process, that's typically what courts are looking for when they're approving government contracting, was there something wrong with the process?
Because we are now, as the newer board members anyway, are being asked to vote to approve a contract that's based on a process we did not approve, so.
And I want to be clear, the government contracting process is very regimented about when a request goes out, what the request must have, and here, for these particular contracts, these are essentially a preferred vendor list. So we put out a RFP, if you would like to have the opportunity to bid on these projects, please respond to this RFP. Orion, and I believe several others, qualified for that vendor list, so there would still be a second step in the process where we have the work, we would put it out to bid, and then the lowest bidder would actually get the contract. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand how that process works, yeah.
Yeah, and I want to add something. Can we change it so that it doesn't have to be the lowest bidder, but it can also be the one that brings the most value? So that could include a low bid, but it could also include a human right issue or something else. So when we're talking about most value, now I understand that you can't make a decision based on allegations. I'm fully cognizant of that, but I do think that we need to give ourselves a little bit of wiggle room to say best value.
My concern there would be that that term is vague and in the eye of the beholder, such that it would be unenforceable as a determining criteria.
Okay, I'd like to look into it to see what it actually says.
Of course.
I mean, see what the law says.
Madam Chair? Yes, ma'am? I have a couple of questions. So the bid process, who owns that process?
MNPS owns that process.
So it is, it is with us. Second thing I want to point out here is whether it's, we have to be clear, that even if prior to the two of you joining the board, it could have been a six-three vote. It was the board. It's still the board that approved it. We can't, it doesn't matter if there were individuals, new or previous, who didn't agree. So it still is a board approval process. So I just think if we're going to enter in this process, we enter into this revisiting of it, we need to be very clear and solid in the foundational reasons why we're opening it up. So again, the subjectiveness of the terminology, the vagueness of the, and again, I have no passion about against it, but if this is what we want to do, you have to be able to measure, and people have to be able to quantitatively respond to whatever criteria that we have in there. So just want us to be very mindful that it, you know, I'm a different kind of person, I know that. And so, I know that this has aroused a lot of passion, but we want to also make sure that we don't put ourselves in a position where we can't get work done, because we've put guidelines and criteria in that there's no one who can meet, because we can't even define what it is. So I just also want to be clear, that what is it that we can do in two weeks, given that the RFP process is, they've already gone through the RFP process, they're already approved vendor, they've already been through the process? What is it that can happen in two weeks that would allow us and not fall into this space of having to, being vague and relying on allegations? What can happen in two weeks that would give us solid grounds to not approve these two contracts?
I'm going to defer to the chair, it seems like she had a...
I just had a suggestion for us that I think might help us to feel a bit more comfortable moving forward, whatever direction we decide to go. We can at any point establish a committee. During my announcements, we'll be talking about an establishment of an ethics committee, but I think this might, this question, these questions around RFPs, questions around these specific contracts, it sounds like we need to, at least some of us want to do more of a deep dive, so I would like to establish sort of a special standalone committee to review potentially the RFP process. I mean, we would have to talk with MNPS staff to see if they even have the bandwidth and capacity in the next two weeks to meet with us, but to talk about potentially the RFP process, but for sure the Orion contracts, to make potentially our new board members or those who have more questions, make them feel more comfortable moving forward one way or the other. So, I mean, I'm fine to defer it, I do, just want to make sure that we're having movement. So there are a few of you all that I know have asked questions that have brought this up in different, in different, you know, avenues, no, different venues. So I know Mrs. Player Peters, she was who first asked me about pulling it from the contract, so Ms. Player Peters, if you're fine with maybe chairing this, you know, quote-unquote, chairing this special committee, just helping us to establish a date, a time, and a place to convene specific questions of either the staff or Orion or whomever else might need to be part of the conversation. If you wouldn't mind, I would have you work with, dang, I won't have you work with Dr. Sevier, I will have you work with Mr. Clay. Is that all right with you? Mrs. Pepe? I mean, Mrs., I thought that was so cute in my head, it didn't come out right. Mrs. Player Peters?
Yes, it is.
You do?
I'm good, I'm okay with chairing this special committee.
All right, so again, anyone can join this, this, the conversation. Mrs. Player Peters, I don't want to leave you on an island by yourself, so if Mrs. Elrod wouldn't mind joining, Mrs. Tyler, everybody have fun, but I do ask that, yes, please. Mrs. Player Peters, you have a few people raising their hands around the table, feel free to work with just about everybody, okay? But again, anyone can come to the meeting whenever they come, but I do want to make sure that we very quickly provide whatever questions we have to staff, so that they can, amongst their other, you know, the other data J operations of the school system, that they can pull information together. Yes, ma'am?
I do want to caution the board about singling out Orion here.
Ah, touche.
So I think that your committee idea is a welcome one. It seems that your fellow members are excited about that, but that should be forward-looking and not looking at this, it would be my recommendation, that it not look at this current contract.
Okay, so it would be a review of RFPs or?
It would be a review of the process, if you all want sort of the standard contract. I also think I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the number of contracts that I sign in which there are no problems, and so I would at least urge you to think about if you are taking an extremely unfortunate situation and extrapolating from that, that there is an error in the process.
And you know what, I appreciate that. Don't go on it, yes, Dr. Gentry. No, go ahead, come on, give us what you got. No, no, go, go.
But thank you for saying that. That was what I was trying to get at earlier, when I started the question about what's going to happen in two weeks. You have to be careful, and, you know, having been a practicing parliamentarian for years for organizations, I see groups go in and put in bylaws to avoid something going wrong, meaning there was an aberration, so now I'm going to try to regulate ethics. You cannot regulate ethics, you just can't, because we will find ourselves in a situation, again, that we don't want to paint ourselves into a corner where we can't function. So I just want us to be mindful of those things, that we're not practicing failure avoidance, but we're trying to create a process that keeps us oriented for success, because there may never be another Armando Orion situation, combination like that. And so, and again, I thank you for saying the other, is that Orion can't be the focal point for this committee. And so that still brings me to my other question, which I guess will get answered in committee, what's going to happen in two weeks for these two contracts? What can we do?
So if you don't mind, I need to narrow the focus then. What it sounds like is I need to narrow the scope of this committee, it's just, I want to, we abide by open laws, or open meeting laws, which say that we can only have these kind of conversations in front of the general public, so there's not much time to grapple with it individually, to try to reconcile amongst each other. I think what I want to be sure is that, we keep talking about Orion, and we, of course, have had Armando come up here a few different times, I would just like to be able to make us all feel comfortable moving forward. I want us to find some way, you know, an amicable completion of this process or this project. So I'm wanting to allow some time for those who have questions to get every question answered. To be frank, in the spring, COVID, I don't know, tornadoes, the loss of a colleague, I think there was a lot of maybe miscommunication, where some had questions and some felt a bit more comfortable with the answers that we were getting, and so I think I just want to be able to quite frankly put this to bed. So I'm trying to allow for a bit more time between now and two weeks from now, where those who have questions that, if they feel like they have suggestions or thoughts that they wanted to get answered, that they didn't have enough time to get answered today, that maybe we just have another point of contact, where we can say, these are, this is what I want to have answered, no matter what the answer to this question is, I will then be ready to vote. Now, that doesn't have to mean another set of meetings, but it could at the very least be one. I think I just, I, as a leader, feel uncomfortable allowing my colleagues to feel uncomfortable unless it's because we've moved forward with a five-four vote. So whatever the vote is, it's going to be it, but I want us to have time to feel comfortable with that vote. Anybody else? Go ahead.
I guess my concern is that we make sure, based, listening to what has been said, that this vote is about this contract and not about something that happened that's already been done and already been paid. Am I missing something? Is it over?
It has not been paid.
I mean, I'm not talking about Armando.
The project itself?
Yes.
The project itself has been complete?
The work is done.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm not talking about Armando. Armando, we didn't contract with Armando, and I'm not being cold and cruel about this. We have to view this through the facts that are in front of us. We may not like what happened, we may have strong passions about what happened, it may rub against us, rub us raw morally, but the work is done, they delivered quality work to my knowledge for us, and I'm not trying to encourage anybody to approve it, just ensure that the lens through which we're evaluating this contract is the right lens. That's all I'm asking.
If you all are open with it, we can continue to have the conversation now and get specific answers. Go ahead, Ms. Obama Kinney.
I have a question related to the, to the contracts. Has the work been completed already, or has the work not been completed?
It's completed.
These are new contracts? Oh, these are new contracts?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think when you say what's changing in two weeks, I understand that we cannot change the language of the contracts. I get that, and it would not be right to do that, because that's not what they bid upon. However, I think I would feel a lot better moving forward in trusting a group to do what it says it's going to do, if they will step up and do it. So if in the next two weeks Orion decides to pay Armando, I'm going to feel a whole lot better about voting for him. Otherwise, I might have to abstain, so that's just my personal feeling.
Okay.
Sorry if I can just jump in one more time. I also caution the board on conditioning approval based on actions that are not related solely to this RFP process that they are involved in currently. This, again, I tried to put, I was trying to do three buckets, and for approval of this contract, the parameters are, what was the RFP process, how was that process conducted, and should we award this contract pursuant to that process?
I kind of...
I'm sorry, go right ahead.
That goes ahead, or kind of, can you hear me? Not really.
Not really.
Okay.
I probably tried the other one maybe.
Let's see, I got two microphones. Now is this, okay, that's the one that doesn't work, excuse me. So thank you for saying that, because that was kind of the beginning of my statement, is what I, you know, we need to kind of make sure that we understand in essence that each contract is a different lane of traffic, and so we have to stay within each lane of traffic. If I understand Ms. Tyler's comments correctly, and of course, Ms. Tyler, if you need to, or Ms. Tyler, if you need to correct me, you're welcome to. Your concern is about non-disclosure agreements in that situation.
It's just a part, but yes, that is part of the concern.
Okay. So can you, Mrs. Rivera, explain to us if that is common practice or not common practice, or if that is something that goes along within our RFPs, or if we have a statement on that at all?
So a non-disclosure agreement would not be in our public contracts, meaning a contract that we have with Orion. We do not have any say on what the contract would be between Orion and Armando. As sort of a general matter, non-disclosure agreements and non-disparagement clauses are very common in the private sector, and the Open Meetings Act or Tennessee Public Records law would not apply to that agreement.
May I ask my follow-up?
Go right ahead.
My follow-up question to that is, are we able to say if one of those is allowed in the future? Are we able to have that type of jurisdiction on a contract between two private parties? Let me look into that and get back to you.
And I'd also like to ask, since the work is being done on a government entity, I am having a hard time wrapping my head around, I understand that there are two private groups that are working, but the money is coming from taxpayers. So how are they allowed to put any sort, now I understand like a non-disclosure... Now, I understand like a non-disparagement, that's, like, I get that. That's part of a settlement. I'm talking about when we're moving forward and we're looking at this, a non-disclosure should not happen with metropolitan government projects, period, in my purview. Because I think that the public has the right to know every single penny and where it goes. And, and we need to be able to follow that trail and not be stuck behind a wall of a non-disclosure somewhere.
Sure. So. I've had a long day. I'm sorry. Okay. So we would have our contract agreement with, that would govern the construction. I agree with you. We could not allow a contractor to shield their contract that they had with a subcontractor. But what we are talking about here is a settlement. It is not part of that work. MNPS was not paying money, so taxpayer money wasn't flowing in this particular instance from MNPS to Armando. The money was flowing from Orion to Armando. And so that is why if those parties chose to negotiate and came to terms, they're free to contract how they'd like.
So even.
Sorry. No, go right here.
So is this just universal, that even if we are unhappy with the actions of a business that wins a contract with MNPS? For example, we put out an RFQ for professional development work. It's completed. We hear from teachers that it was crap. It was no good. It wasn't, wasn't good work. We put out another RFQ. That same company wants to do professional development. They're still on the approved vendor list. They give the lowest bid, so we still end up hiring them to do that work, even though we were not, we were subjectively and qualitatively unhappy with the work that they did previously because of moral issues with the fact that the delivery was not the type that we would have appreciated.
Sure. And there's a lot to unpack in that question, but I'd like to start with the basic premise that we were unhappy with their work. Our contract with Orion was for the work of McMurray Middle School. We accepted that project. To my knowledge, we have not had any issues with the work performed. We paid for a building. We've gotten a building. Under your example, we have paid for professional development. Let's say the presenter never showed up. We would not have gotten what we bargained for.
What if we find out the presenter was amoral in some other way that is not related to the RFQ process? We still, I'm sorry. And I'm going.
No, that's okay. I certainly understand wanting to tease this out. But here, what I think the relevant question is, is what recourse does MNPS have under its current contract to have Orion pay a third party? And I am unaware of a legal option that MNPS has to force Orion to do that.
Got it. I, I think a lot of my thoughts are how do we move forward? So, and like what you're saying in that third bucket of what's the future look like? How are we going to set it up? And, and that, I think, is where we need to really get our ducks in a row and do it right.
Any other thoughts or questions? All right. I've still been kind of processing how to move forward because we're about to vote. But especially if the vote is to defer for two weeks, I want to make sure that in two weeks, we're ready to vote. So I, I don't know that it's necessarily then a meeting, but it is at least maybe a collection of old documents because I know we've all, we've gotten these things. They're just floating out in Outlook. So it may just be that I asked Ms. Player Peters, if you're open to it, to, to work with Mr. Clay to make sure that all the documents related to the first, the past Orion, Orion contract be compiled and sent to the full board for review so that if this, if this motion passes, that in two weeks, we're prepared to all vote?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Now, if it does not, if the, if this motion does not pass, then we'll just need to have a separate conversation about how to move forward with Armando if that is the will of the board, because I do think we'll hear, we'll continue to hear from the community. Did you have a question, Ms. or Dr. Gentry? Go ahead.
And I apologize. So I'm just trying to keep what Melissa said in the forefront. I think her guiding and her caution was we cannot use allegations from the previous engagement to make decisions about this contract. And we go on record and it gets recorded that that's what's driving our decision. That's problematic. Did I misunderstand that?
You did not.
Okay. So I thought the purpose of this committee was to revisit the RFP process in general, which makes sense to me. Now, I don't know how we're going to bake in all these morality concerns that you guys have, but Godspeed. So I'm still trying to understand, what is the information gathering process that can actually be used to make a decision about these two contracts? Again, I'm not trying to push it. I just don't want us to burn calories.
I understand that, but these are still, you know, individual questions that we have. So the, so I've narrowed, we narrowed the focus of that committee. It's just to pull together the information because no matter what happens, Armando will still likely talk, will be coming back to this board if he doesn't get paid his money. So I do think that whomever wants to have all the documents ready, that they'll, they should just have it at some point. So it may not be connected to this in your mind, and it might be, I think I am heeding Mrs. Robert's suggestion that this is, these are two different contracts. These people have won a RFP process or earned through the RFP process, the right to be paid the money to earn this contract. And we do know that MNPS professionals are the best and brightest. So I trust them. And so I think if they, you know, my personal feeling is that if they won the RFP, then I'm willing to move forward with the contract. But again, in my mind, two separate, two separate conversations. Now, one is about these two contracts in general. Another is any conversations about Armando moving forward and how we either are going to support him or continue to, you know, have him come before the board for questioning. I don't know. I just, I just want to pull a thread at some point and put a period at the end of this, to be frank. Now, I did hear what you said, Ms. Robert, again, for the full board to hear, that these two contracts should be separate in our minds. I'm not in your minds, though, so.
Yes.
I personally think the best practice would be that we ask as many questions as we can this evening and that we get as much information as possible this evening and in hopes to take a vote this evening to make sure that we stay away from any appearances, intentional or non-intentional, of there being some type of misunderstanding of we're basing a future contract on a past contract, which we are not to do. I do think that there is maybe some validity to continuing to have a conversation, particularly because y'all were not here, of maybe how that went, just so you have some historical context, since we will continue to hear from different parties about it and you want to be willing and able to speak to your constituents and just the public about those situations. But I think that's a separate situation than this. That's purely just information that we need to make sure that you have so that you are informed and knowledgeable and you do have a right to that. But for today, I think really what we need is to make sure that we have any questions or concerns about these specific contracts, which seem to be, are they going to do this again? If you want to cut to the chase, that seems to be y'all's concern. And so I don't know if we have an answer for that. And I, I think that the answer that we would like to give you is, is no, based upon our responses to how it happened in the past. But once again, that is not supposed to be something that we are considering when looking at these contracts because they are still supposed to be two separate lanes. So my hope is, is if you have those questions or concerns between us, because we have all lived through this together, or most of us have, and then of course, Ms. Robert and our other professionals here, if you have specific questions about what we can do about the RFP process in the future, I think that's probably worth the committee and as of us doing something. But I don't think we're going to be able to get that done in two weeks. And I don't think that we're going to be able to do it satisfactory in two weeks. Maybe if we do it, it's not going to be great. So to Dr. Gentry's suggestions, I think it's important that we have clear, clear decision lanes of how we are making this decision today and how we made past decisions and then how we make future decisions.
I love it. And it sounds like you are calling for the question then. So with that, Mrs. Tyler, if you wouldn't mind repeating your motion, there, it was properly seconded and then we'll vote.
The motion was to defer the Orion contracts till next meeting.
Okay. And we had a second? All in favor? Raise your hand.
All right.
We heard you there, P P. All right. It was three, four. All opposed? All right. That was four, four, and all abstaining. All right. Wait, I mean, all abstaining. One abstain, one abstention. All right. So we need a second motion on the floor because we have to be.
I'm sorry, I'm not abstaining.
Oh, what was your vote?
Favor of postponing.
Oh, I'm sorry. So there were, okay.
There were four.
Four and four. So we still need a second motion on the floor. My apologies. Do I have another motion? I move that we accept the two Orion contracts. We will separately form a different committee to, no, just I, I move that we approve the two contracts. I will separately say what my intention is with the committee. Huh?
You're going to get the same response.
Yeah?
You're going to get the same vote, but go ahead.
It's going to be the same.
It's going to be the same.
Same vote. So we need to ask the questions.
So what's going to get, so if I get this correctly, the motion fails, we cannot, they do, they are not approved because it is a tie. They are not approved tonight, but they can't come up on consent agenda again? Is that correct? Am I missing something? No action is no?
No action is a no.
Right. Right. No five votes. There's nothing. David, can I defer to you on this moment or this point of clarity on board procedure?
David Sevier, board staff. The motion was to defer. It was not to not approve. So it was like nothing happened. So you're sort of back at square one procedurally. And another motion can be entertained.
But I'm pretty sure we know where the votes would lie. We can entertain it, though, if anyone wants to. We will see them in two weeks on the consent agenda, right? That's what happens next.
That's what she said.
That would be up to Dr. Battle, whether or not they come forward or not. I mean, there, there, there's not a requirement that they be brought forward. If we still want them to be approved, then they would have to come to you at some point.
I got you. And I am so sorry for talking to you and not to Dr. Battle. All right. So Dr. Battle, thoughts on the next steps?
Now, it's, Melissa, could you approach the mic, please? Because it's my understanding because of their approval through the RFP process that they must be brought forward for the, for approval from the board.
They do need to be voted on by the board at some point. At a certain point, a indefinite deferral will act as an effective denial.
Okay.
Why do we have to vote if we have to vote yes? Why are we voting if the requirement is that we have to say yes?
And I will just respectfully disagree. You don't have to say yes, but if you are going to say no, it would be my recommendation that you have a legally defensible reason for saying no.
Fair enough. Okay. That, that helps to tie at least tonight in a bow. All right. So any last questions before we move forward? It looks like they will potentially be coming back in two weeks, more than potentially.
I have a question.
Yes? Ms. Player Peters?
So have we made any improvements to the RFP process for this contract that, I guess, puts any stake holds for our responsibility or the prime contractor's responsibility for paying subcontractors? Have we made any improvement since then outside of Mr. Armando's case?
Is the new clause in this one?
It would be in our standard terms, standard good and services contract, yes. And again, I do want to reiterate, this is an incident that happened. I don't know that it is an indictment on the process itself. That's certainly something Chairwoman Bugs has, has, it may authorize you all to look into. But I haven't seen a problem with the process necessarily. And the way construction contracts are set up, there is recourse for it via the performance bond or a lawsuit that Armando could avail himself of.
Okay. Any other thoughts, questions? So the agenda for next board, for the next board meeting will come out the Thursday before. If you have any questions between now and then, let us know. I still just do think that there needs to be a collecting of the information. So Mr. Clay and Ms. Freea Player Peters, because that seems to be what is still frustrating some of us. So the collect, the information will be pulled together from the past so that everybody can have, in a timely manner, time to review. All right? Well, then we are move, about to move forward? Just, yep. All right. And we are moving forward. With that said, thank you, Ms. Bobo. All right. Next up is director's report. Our organization.
Thank you, board members. I'm happy to be here to provide some updates on our organization and how we're meeting the needs of our students and staff. This is Principal Appreciation Month, and I wanted to start off and say how grateful I am for all of our principal leaders throughout the district who inspire their staff and students each day to reach higher and achieve their goals. We will continue celebrating them throughout the end of the month by expressing our appreciation and value they bring to MNPS. Before we jump into our presentation, I wanted to provide you a brief update on where we are as a district and a city with regards to COVID-19. Earlier this morning, we reported out the quarantines and isolations throughout the district for the week of October 19th through the 25th, which are 138 staff quarantined or isolated, 28 confirmed positive, 297 students quarantined or isolated with 17 confirmed positive. It is important to note that those numbers are what are reported by our school nurse program to the district, and they include students or staff who may have been working virtually. And the numbers are not to indicate they contracted the virus through school. We are continuing to review metrics and trends throughout the city and in our schools. We have established one specific metric, excuse me, we have not established one specific metric as the God post for the district because I believe we must look at the entire picture when making decisions about the safety of our students and staff. However, we look at daily case counts, the transmission rate, 14-day new case trend, and new cases per 100,000 residents. Three of those are in red on the city's dashboard, and the positivity rate has been increasing, which is why this board recommended and I implemented a pause in the return of middle school students to classrooms that was originally scheduled to begin today. We remain committed to communicating new phase-in dates once conditions allow. Students in pre-K4 whose parents chose the option of in-person learning are still reporting to classrooms, as are students with exceptional needs, and I hope that will continue to be the case because we know those students are the ones who will most benefit from in-person learning and are least susceptible to contracting or spreading the virus. However, we must continue to monitor the situation and be prepared to shift if the evidence is clear that students or staff are at increased risk by reporting to school. The circumstances around the pandemic have required the district to shift our focus to supporting students in a new environment where they don't have access to all the services, services they would normally get in our buildings. And food is a primary example of that. Tonight, we want to recognize the Student Support Services and Community Achieves Team for their relentless commitment to supporting students and families with food boxes since the first week of March. Many of the schools have been distributing food boxes, and the team even has a home delivery system for families that do not have transportation. But in the spring, when it was evident there would be a long-term need for food, seven schools committed to long-term weekly distribution. This project takes lots of behind-the-scenes coordination, and we want to thank the entire Community Achieves Team and the school principals who continue to support this commitment. Tonight, we recognize the coordinators from each school who have been on the front lines supplying food, families with much-needed resources. Antioch Shannon Fisk-Patrick, Glencliff Bailey Tidwell, Haywood Atlee Tyree, Hillwood Assistant Principal Celia Jolly, and Jeremy Quinones, J. E. Moss, Jennifer Hurst, Pearl Cone and Westwood Baptist Church Pam Burgess, and McGavick Chef Michael Walker. We also want to thank the mayor's task force for convening organizations from across the city to support food distribution. Second Harvest Food Bank for the supply and delivery of food, the Academies of Nashville for the use of their equipment for food storage, and the staff members who assist. Numerous volunteers, many from Student Support Services who show up every week, and the Family Resource Center Lead Agency's pencil and family children services. Collectively, we have distributed 46,378 boxes of food. Collectively, we have distributed 46,378 boxes of food, equaling 1,327,805 meals. Finally, Mayor John Cooper wanted to say thank you as well. He said, "I'd like to express my sincere gratitude to Shannon Bailey, Atlee, Celia, Jeremy, Jennifer, Pam, and Michael for their selfless work and humanitarian spirit on behalf of Nashville's hungry families. You and your seven schools stepped up seven months ago, probably never guessing that would still be a need through the spring, summer, fall, and the upcoming winter. Thank you for your leadership. You set an example not only for the children in your schools, but for the entire community." Thank you, Mayor Cooper. So, let me just say thank you again on behalf of the entire district to everyone who has worked so hard and so creatively to get food to our students and families. This is an invaluable service that you've performed during a uniquely challenging time, and it has made a huge difference. Thank you. So as I said earlier, tonight, we're going to present a report to you on our organization and some of our key strategies and tactics, which start with, one, providing efficient and effective operations, customer service, and communications across the district, its departments, and its schools; two, create a collaborative culture of data analysis and accountability to advance district, department, and school improvement goals. We're going to focus tonight on four key points under our first strategy. Providing clear, timely, and transparent communications to internal and external customers; implementing energy conservation and recycling measures across district offices and schools; upgrading and expanding computer access for students and teachers; and updating and implementing, implementing the learning technology plan for schools. You'll also hear about how we're measuring our progress and how we're reaching out to students and families through our new navigator program. And now, I will turn it over to our team, first with Sean Braystead, our executive officer of communications.
Thank you, Dr. Battle, thank you, board. One of our organizational strategies is to provide clear, timely, and transparent communications to internal and external customers. We do this for several mediums, including phone, text, and email callouts, social media, the news media, and our website, which acts as a central hub of information for them all. Here are some engagement statistics from the MMPS Emma account, which is our primary method for reaching staff with important updates and information about what's going on within MMPS. This includes our regular newsletter that goes out on Thursday, as well as principal connection, messages from Dr. Battle, and other district-wide communications and initiatives. Included are engagement rates from the beginning of this fiscal year to current, and those are compared to the same period last year. And as we can see, an increase in opens, clicks, campaigns, sent, and the number of emails going out, which gets to our goal of providing clear, timely, and transparent communications to our internal customers. In addition to email, communications has partnered with Technology Services Division to upgrade and improve the My MMPS Intranet portal for staff, launching just a few months ago. Here, you can find access to information and resources as it pertains to your daily work here at Metro Schools. Our first line of direct contact with families, students, and staff is the Blackboard Parent Link System, which uses directory information from the Infinite Campus Portal for emails, phones, calls, and text messages. Since July 1, we've sent 324 messages, which includes messages in English and translated into languages such as Spanish, Arabic, Kurdish, Burmese, and Nepali, and that translates into more than 4 million district contacts. And I need to give a big shout out to the translation team led by Susan York and Manny Diaz de Leon, who ensure that all of our families, regardless of their language, receive critical updates from the district. All schools have, also have access to the system, and during that same time period have sent more than 4,700 messages for nearly 3.5 million contacts. Social media is the format which so many people now get their news and information, and that is where we push out a lot of the good news that is happening throughout the district, as well as important updates that students, families, and staff need to know about. Whether that is Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, or Instagram, we want to keep Nashville engaged in our daily operations and to see the great work our staff are doing every day to serve our students. And here, we have a bit of a deeper dive into Facebook, which not only serves as a way for our stakeholders to hear information, but to also engage with the district or their fellow Nashvillians on issues related to Metro Schools. We'd like to also highlight the efforts of Ruben De Peña in the Communications Office, who helps to get the word out about district initiatives and answers questions on Hispanic radio stations in Nashville, as well as through our MMPS en Español Facebook page and other mediums. Our website serves as a central hub for all engagement activity within MMPS. It is where we post detailed information, such as our virtual learning playbook, COVID-19 protocols, updates on nutrition, transportation, and other student support services that are provided by the district. Many of our social media or email engagements link back to this site. Our team has worked diligently to keep our website and school sites updated as quickly as possible, but the system we currently have in place is limited in the type of functionality our district needs, especially as it relates to empowering our schools to use their websites for sharing important information and highlights from their day-to-day activities. That's why the Communications Department has been working with Technology Services to move our website into a system built for school districts called School Messenger. This migration and redesign is in process now for a launch in March of 2021. Some of the key features of the new website will include school websites with new news blogs, calendars, academic pages, and directory information that is integrated with our internal systems to keep up to date with staffing changes at the school or district level. ADA compliance and translation services will be critical to making sure everyone has equal access to our content, and shareable content and 24/7 support will also be important features of this new CRM-based website that will break down silos and empower staff to better serve the students and families of our district. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Doug Renfro.
Good evening, I'm Doug Renfro, and I'm the Executive Director of Technology Services. And I thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight to provide some updates about technology in the district. We're going to begin with student laptops, since that's been a hot topic lately. We have ordered over 71,000 laptops for this district using the CARES Act money, and we have received over 56,000 delivered. We have just spoken to Dell today, and the rest of the delivery is ahead of target, and we should have those devices in the warehouse and received by the end of November. So that's very positive news. We have deployed over 49,000 laptops to our students in support of remote learning. These were a combination of CARES Act devices and older laptops that were in our schools prior to the pandemic. We are currently in the process of exchanging those devices in our pre-K4 with our in-stud, in-person learners, as this reaches the largest number of learners in the most rapid fashion. We have laptops staged at all elementary and middle schools for in-person and virtual, and remote learners for deployment throughout the rest of this fall. And we have additional laptops staged at all schools as we are still registering new students as they come in, and we do have students that have a need to exchange a laptop as something does happen. Accidents do happen with laptops, there's no doubt about it. We have purchased 22,000 hotspots to make sure that our students have connectivity at home, and we have distributed 18,500 of those hotspots to families. We upgraded teacher laptops. Traditionally and historically, our approach has been to give the teachers the exact same laptop that the students have used. As we moved to remote teaching, we realized that this laptop did not have the capabilities to do what it needed to do. So we piloted with remote teachers a professional-grade laptop, it was a Dell 5410, that would meet the needs of remote teaching. Once we are certain that that device would meet that need with that pilot group, we purchased enough devices for certificated staff and teachers, and we have deployed 6,250 of those devices to our teachers and our certificated staff in support of remote teaching. As we brought back some of those teacher devices, we used a state LEA reopening grant to upgrade 1,000 devices at a cost of $72 a device to support our ParaPros as they support instruction. We have now deployed 976 of those ParaPro laptops to our ParaPros in support. Prior to the pandemic, the Technology Services Department was collaborating with other departments and our community partners to develop the Learning and Infrastructure Technology Plan. As you can see, these goals are the core focus for where we want our students and our teachers to get our, our students, where we want them to go. We want them to leverage technology and have a personalized learning pathway. When we were developing this plan, we did not envision a time where we would be one-to-one. The fiscal impact of one-to-one is heavy, and we are now lucky to be at one-to-one. And this is opening up great opportunities for access and for our students and our teachers as we meet these goals. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to David Prophet.
Dr. Battle, Ms. Bugs, board members, thank you for allowing me to discuss a little about our energy conservation program. There are several things that we can glean from this chart and the information that's shown. One, our energy project was begun in late 2019 and fully implemented in 2020. We've had three full-time contracted energy managers, with one of those focused largely on educating, on education about the energy conservation program, which I'll get into in just a moment. Our energy budget was approximately $21.5 million and established our baseline in 2019. Our fiscal year '20 spend is $18.7 million, for a total net savings of approximately $2.4 million. We experienced a significant reduction during the COVID shutdown due to efforts of our energy team, which comprised seven, of seven people in the maintenance department plus the three energy contracted individuals. Our point with that is, is if seven people can make this type of impact, imagine the possibilities when all of our staff and students are fully immersed in this, this energy conservation program. The current graph starts in year 2019, and you'll notice an increase in the energy use in August and September of 2019. That was due to some unusual temperature fluctuations that we had in those months. But, and it was also in, it was also before the program actually got into gear. We had to do a lot of upfront work. We had to do an energy audit on every school, every building, and then the program after that was fully implemented in 2020. Our goal is to reduce energy consumption by 2% in successive years. 2% represents approximately $2 million. This will require the need to, of a full investment, for full investment, from our district to control, to continue to achieve this goal. Our small group performs energy audits quarterly, and we revisit those facilities that are not meeting our energy benchmarks within a month of each quarterly audit to determine how best we can improve those energy reduction goals. There's also an educational component to our program. We are converting energy programs to synchronous and asynchronous. Yes, it affects facilities too, so that we can do our work virtually with our children and our teachers who are using some of our programs. We perform departmental trainings, we provide instructional videos, and we are planning for energy competitions when schools are back in person. Communicating these energy goals occurs in various ways. Principal Connection inside MMPS, Caught Green-Handed, which is a quarterly staff recognition program for energy conservation efforts, MMPS Energy Intranet, which includes a blog, MMPS Energy Dashboard, and Email Blast. Now, for your viewing enjoyment, our Energy Dashboard, which includes our energy consumption for each school, if you want to go visit your school, is located at mmps.org under the About pulldown, so click on that. You go to the Facilities Department then, and then you can click on the Energy icon, and you can see those Energy Dashboards for all of the schools, if you want to see how they're performing. Finally, we realized COVID gave us an opportunity for, to document 2 million, plus or minus $2 million that can be saved when schools are unoccupied. So we're hoping that an opportunity to consolidate summer programs and activities as we go forward will help us improve even more our, our goals of energy conservation and reducing our carbon footprint and all of those things that are working side by side. And quite frankly, if I can add just a footnote, I think we're ahead of what Metro Nashville's looking at. They're going through a large energy reduction program too, and have assembled a huge group of which I'm part of, the energy program. But, so I think we're doing a good job so far, and we'll continue to, to work toward these end goals. Thank you very much.
I'm Paul Changus, Executive Director for Research Assessment and Evaluation, and I'm going to provide a brief overview of our Fall MAP Assessment results. MAP stands for Measures of Academic Progress. It's a nationally-normed achievement test administered to over 8 million students per year. We communicated to our families and our educators prior to the fall administration of the MAP that the primary purpose of the testing this fall would be to support the instructional process, to support students and teachers, and that the results would not be used for high-stakes decisions. We knew testing in a remote setting would provide new challenges, but that the data would provide useful information to our educators regarding the mastery of specific skills and standards. In addition to providing challenges and administering the tests, remote testing created new challenges for those of us attempting to interpret the results, which is why we've urged caution and reminded educators to use multiple measures in making decisions. So these are some highlights from our fall testing. The MAP window was extended this fall a little bit to allow teachers to assess students in smaller groups, given that they were testing remotely, and testing occurred from mid-August to mid-September. The number of students attempting the MAP this year was down a little bit from prior years, but we tested almost 38,000 students for each subject area, reading and mathematics. MAP was our universal screener as part of the multi-tiered Systems of Support process for grades K through 9. In past years, FastBridge assessments were our screener in grades K and 1, but it was felt that MAP would provide a better opportunity to test remotely in those grades. It's been used nationally in, in remote testing before. For the vast majority of our students, the scores appear to be relatively consistent with past performance and valid as a universal screener. The situation is somewhat different, however, in the early grades, particularly K through 2, where the scores are significantly higher than in past years. I've been in weekly calls in recent months with the Council of Great City Schools, with, with other districts that tested remotely, and they're reporting the same findings, that scores in those early grades do tend to be inflated somewhat. It's very likely that families supporting young learners with technical issues and remote testing, we're not familiar with the distinction between an assessment and an instructional activity. They're not trained to be test proctors. But the fall results look much more consistent when we get to the upper elementary and middle school grades. In grades where we did see some learning loss, academic growth was less affected in reading than in math, which was consistent also with what other large urban districts are telling us, and also what was anticipated by the test vendor, NWA. But just to be clear, any potential learning loss we may see here occurred prior to this fall. This, the data I'm presenting was baseline data from the beginning of the school year. So let's look at reading results for, by grade level, from this fall. And you'll see for each set of data, there are two columns. We're comparing what happened in fall a year ago, 2019, to what we saw this fall, 2020. So as previously stated, grades K and 1 were not mandated in the prior year, so I'm going to highlight the number tested. And you can see that we have obviously a lot more students tested in those grades K and 1. Previously, schools had the option to test in, in grades other than 2 through 9. Those were not mandated. Schools decided, in some cases, to purchase the assessments there. We see the numbers down in grades 10 and 11, and 10 and 11, which were also optional grades this year and not mandated. When we look at achievement scores in the next column, we're looking at median national percentiles. And just as a reminder, the... And just as a reminder, the median national percentile is 50. That, that would be the point at which 50% of students scored lower than, than our average or typical student. So when you see a score of 95 for this fall in kindergarten, that means that our typical kindergarten student this year scored higher than 95% of students nationally. And as much as I would like to believe that's a valid number, we do believe that that's probably a little bit inflated.
Come on, Paul, come on. Mr. Arkansas.
I hate to be a downer, but that's, that's probably a little bit off. However, as you look into the upper elementary and middle school grades, you'll see that the scores are much closer than before, to prior years. As we move to the next set of data, one of the nice things about the MAP assessment is that it provides norms for growth as well as achievement. So we were just looking at one-time measures of achievement. Now we're looking at the growth that occurred over the past year from the fall of 2019 to the fall of 2020. And, and what we see here is again, 50 would be the national average in terms of growth. In grades one and two, we're seeing that our typical child made greater growth than over 70% of students nationally. And we've done pretty well in those lower grades before, but not quite that well. Where we start to see a little bit of a decline is when we get into the middle school grades. This is one indication of potential learning loss, that the scores are a little bit lower in terms of growth. However, you'll see that even in, even in the lowest numbers are only slightly below the national average of 50. The last set of data is, is we tried to identify scores that were probably questionable and not necessarily the, the best estimate of student achievement and growth. We looked at the percent of students who scored at the 99th percentile in terms of growth over one year. So this, these are the percentages of students. And, and historically, as you can see in past years, we've seen about in the neighborhood of 5% or in some cases a little lower than that, a little bit higher than that, but generally about that percentage of students scoring that, that well for growth. Obviously, the growth in grades one and two and even three is, is quite a bit higher than that. So what we have done is we have flagged scores in our data warehouse that are, that are extremely high in comparison to previous years or extremely low. Because not only did we have some unusually high scores, but we had students who had technical problems with testing and, and the, the scores don't represent their, their best achievement. So we have flagged those scores to remind our educators that one data point is not always enough to identify where students are, that we should always look again at multiple measures for additional evidence. As we look at mathematics, we'll see some similar tendencies. Overall, achievement scores increased from this time last year for all grades except grade four, which stayed the same at the 38th percentile. Achievement and growth scores were lower in mathematics than we saw in reading. And it's not unusual for our achievement scores to be lower in mathematics and reading, but that's usually not the case in terms of academic growth. Again, this gets back to the predictions that were made that, that any kind of learning loss over an extended period of time, we typically have some summer loss, but this was an extended period of time. We felt that it likely would impact mathematics more. Students tended to read when they're not in classrooms over the summer. They generally don't spend a lot of time doing math problems. With regard to the 99th percentile data, again, we see consistent with what we saw in reading, much higher percentages of students at the 99th percentile in, in the lowest grades, one and two here. With regard to our student subgroups, we looked at our racial ethnic groups and our economically disadvantaged English learners and exceptional ed students. As we've seen in past years, when we look at one-time measures of achievement such as the median national percentile, we see significant differences in achievement between the subgroups. Historically, we've always seen more consistent results as we do here with regard to, to growth, the median national percentile for growth. What's, you know, it's not unusual for our economically disadvantaged students to, to be affected by summer learning loss and, and for growth to be impacted in the fall. But it was slightly more pronounced this year with the extended time that we were away. However, we historically see English learners making greater growth in reading than their peers, and that's not the case. They were slightly below the non-English learners, 51 to 53 in terms of growth. However, exceptional ed students did outpace their peers slightly in terms of growth. And with regard to mathematics, again, very significant differences when we look at the one-time measures of achievement. The gaps remain wide, but they also widen slightly more for economically disadvantaged. In terms of growth, the, the non-economically disadvantaged students expanded by three points in terms of, of growth compared to economically disadvantaged. However, you'll see English learners made greater growth as did exceptional ed students compared to their peers. So that's our data. Where we go from here, I've been, I've been looking at test results at the state or district level for over 40 years. This has been the biggest challenge for me and all that time to interpret data from, from remote assessments. But to measure our progress this year, when everything is so different and our usual measures are not comparable to prior years, we'll be slightly shifting away from our standard KPIs to what we're calling focused outcomes. That these, these address our personalized learning experiences for our students. They'll also concentrate on the critical integration of academics and social emotional learning. And now I will hand it over to Dr. Carrie Randolph to talk about our Navigator program.
Good evening. It's good to be with you. I'm Carrie Randolph and it's my honor and privilege to serve the students and educators of MNPS as the Executive Officer of Strategic, State, Federal, and Philanthropic Investments. And I'm excited to get to kind of link to what Paul was talking about and talk about our Navigator support system that really starts to tie together some of those, and key focused outcomes that he just mentioned. So I think we can all agree that 2021 has been new in many different ways, new and different. And from the beginning of the year, our schools have been working hard to support students and families in navigating all that is the 2021 school year. We know that a great education is rooted in strong relationships. And from the beginning, we've really thought about what that actually looks like when you're not with students physically. So arguably, those connections and relationships are more important than ever in this time. So navigators or school staff members support small cohorts of students with regular check-ins. They serve as mentors, advisors, and advocates, helping identify needs and challenges and connecting students and families to targeted supports. So I'd like to share some data with you. During the last six weeks, navigators have logged more than 140,000 check-ins that have generated more than 1,100 collaborative referrals. What that means is that a need was identified through that check-in that required support and connection to other resources. This could be food, housing, social, emotional, mental health supports, academic supports, technology, a whole range of things, because it's rooted in a conversation and a relationship. This number doesn't include the countless questions and challenges navigators themselves were able to answer and address that didn't require a collaborative, a collaborative referral. So that rate, as I kind of, I would love to, I spend a lot of time with Paul's team. I love data. So I'll say the rate of collaborative referrals has remained steady throughout, ever since we opened school, with about 100 collaborative referrals generated for every 10,000 Navigator check-ins. We've seen that rate be very consistent. We've created school level and district level dashboards linked to Navigator check-ins. So data is collected and it's viewable through a visualization dashboard. Navigator leadership teams at the school can use the Navigator data dashboard to follow up on student needs. We can drill down to the student level through the dashboard and tie into existing support structures at the school, often involving the school social worker, the school psychologist, the school counselor, and so on. Central Office is also able to serve as a support system, monitoring and responding to needs and deploying resources where needed. Empowered with data, we are really serving as a support hub with the Navigator system that's providing direct support when needed to students, schools, and families. To my knowledge, we are the largest system to launch such a comprehensive support system. And I think it's really important to call that out, that this is an area where we lead and I get calls about the system that we've launched from other systems asking for support and advice. And a huge shout out to the real people that make this work, our navigators and our schools, for putting students first and making sure every student is known and supported in a culture of care. And I'm going to put in a little plug to tell you, we do customize. We have a handbook and provide scripts to support navigators. We want to reduce the preparation and just make sure they're able to reach out and make those strong relationships. But another area I want to call to your attention, we, an example of that close connection and kind of customized supports is that I'd like to make sure everyone knows that our junior and senior navigators have been sharing with our students that our virtual college fair is this Friday. Okay, really important. And second, our seniors have received customized supports through navigators as well as many partners to complete their Tennessee Promise application. The deadline is Monday. We're pushing really hard. We saw a 10% increase over the last couple of days, but really trying to push our seniors to keep that option open for themselves. So we've been pushing that out through Navigator as well. Navigator support will continue and remain an important support for our students, both in-person and virtual. We see the value, we hear it from our families, we hear it from our students, and we hear it from our navigators. And I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Bad.
Thank you, Carrie. And thank you to the entire Central Office team who presented tonight and shared updated information. Finally, I want to end my report with a video that our MNPS ambassadors put together to support their fellow students through the virtual learning process.
Hey, y'all, it's your student ambassador.
Hey, y'all, it's one of your student ambassadors here.
Hey, guys, my name is Dr. Paul Beltran and I'm one of your student ambassadors.
Hi, my name is Kiara Woods and I'm the fellow student ambassador.
Hey, guys, I'm Ashida Patel, I'm your senior student ambassador from McGavick.
I am an ambassador of McGavick High School. My name's Calgo Four.
Hey, guys, it's Ruby, I'm a McGavick student ambassador.
I wanted to give you guys some encouragement as we're all navigating this virtual learning and whether you're in school, whether you're not going back yet, I just want to remind you guys to stay strong, really make sure that you're getting on to Schoology, logging on, getting your work turned in in time.
Make sure you log into Schoology every single day. This will help count your attendance as well as you can see what material is due and what you have to do in the future.
You can show that you have perfect attendance, your teachers, your counselors, the colleges that you're going to apply to are all going to look for this. You're going to notice that you're a bright and ambitious, good student.
For those of you who have been getting your assignments done, logging into Schoology, getting everything done, that's great. And for those of you who have not, I will encourage you, actually challenge you to log into Schoology.
So I just want to give you a couple tips. Stay mentally, mentally healthy, meditate as lo, as much as you can, do something that you enjoy.
Take it from a senior, y'all, the best thing you can do is make connections in high school. So you can do that by waking up on time, getting onto Schoology, you know, like you built your reputation. Those people may be writing you a recommendation letter to where you go to college, the military, you open up your own business, whatever you want to do, you're going to need a net.
We need to encourage ourselves to take initiative of our own education. It's important that we log into Schoology every day. Logging into Schoology is going to do numerous benefits for us. We're going to be able to get perfect attendance, we're going to attend our classes, complete our assignments, and we're going to maintain a really good GPA. And as a senior, all of those things are really important to, like, so you can graduate and achieve success.
If you're having any hiccups at all of your questions, feel free to ask someone. If there's anything that you need, there are peers and fellow ambassadors such as myself and teachers and administrators who can help you. So don't be afraid or feel ashamed if you ever need help. There is no shame in getting any help.
So if you're having any issues with Schoology or your assignments, contact your teachers and make sure to log into Schoology every day.
I just wanted to remind you guys to keep pushing forward and keep doing amazing things with school and just in general.
I know that times are hard right now, but you are strong. We are strong as a community and we will be through this.
If you're going back, great. If you're staying virtual, great. You guys got this.
I am personally a senior, so I want to see my class graduate. So to every single senior who watches this video, I want you to log into Schoology because I want to see all of you graduate and I want to see all of you succeed in life.
Already, being in MNPS, we have a network. We have people to reach out to if you're struggling, if you feel like you feel alone or you're not getting this, or this is not working for you. Reach out, reach out to your counselor, your friends, your teachers, your staff, faculty. They're all here, okay? MNPS strong. They're all here so that we can be better, we can do better, and we can grow. Okay? So you guys have a good day and be great.
Well, they're not here physically, but we can give them a round of applause because we brought them in virtually. And again, I think it's just always good to see and hear from our students. I will tell you that we've been launching various cabinets to get feedback and to keep the wheel moving around innovation, to make sure we're supporting and refining our practices as a district. So in alignment with our principal's cabinet, our teacher's cabinet, our support cabinet, which we're launching very soon, we have our student ambassadors, which is our student cabinet. And this was their idea. We've been coming together for several months now. Thank you to Dr. Spring and her team for being a part of that, leading the work. Donna Gill and her team, the Academies of Nashville for pulling students together. And we've really been listening to them, gathering their feedback around how we can be shifting and supporting our students during this virtual time. And so they wanted to encourage their fellow classmates to just get in there and be strong and to know that we're here to support them. So thank you to all of the student ambassadors, those who serve on the teacher cabinet, and everyone who had a hand in representing our students this evening. And with that, Madam Chair, that will close out my director's report.
Thank you so much. All right, ladies, we will begin with announcements with Dr. Gen.
Do we, do I have questions about the presentation?
That was so rude of me. Go right ahead.
I just want to, I just want to call out really quickly that I'm really concerned about these gaps between student groups. I would love it if we would call them student groups and not subgroups and not have the prefix of sub, if we could make that change. And I just want to hear a little bit about what the thinking is going forward in terms of now that we're beginning to collect this data, if there's any, you know, any thinking about planning around instructional interventions and so forth around that.
I'll start first with what Dr. Chang has highlighted. After we've received now some data with regards to our MAP assessment and really analyzing the data with regards to the implications for our students, taking all the feedback in with regards to where we are with our curriculum implementation, given that we have students both in-person and virtual, we are making a shift from our standard key performance indicators into focused outcomes that are personalized to our students, that are, that are drilling down to the individual level. And so we're, we've got it in a draft form right now. We'll be presenting that in its formal state to the board very soon, giving you an opportunity to react to it. But to be as responsive as we need to be with regards to those gaps you see, we are going to drill down much further than we have before and it'll give us a really straightforward and explicit view. and explicit view of where our students are and how we will continue to shift. So we will have focused outcomes around literacy, around numeracy, and we will have SEL-integrated outcomes for every single student based upon their grade level. So that's where we are. And again, that will require specific shifts in our approach to supporting students, making sure we're differentiating. We're going to call that out on our document, as well as a plethora of supports that will be available. Our ultimate goal is to get this in a format that is not only consumable for us as a board, but for, it's usable for our school teams, but also our parents, to be well aware where their students are, the opportunities that, the opportunity gap that we're looking to close that are available to all of our students. And so our commitment is to, again, drill down to the student level and not allow students to be caught up in a larger district goal, because we know the gaps have widened for some of our students, and we need to be very specific and intentional in our supports with students as we move forward.
Other thoughts or questions?
I had a question about our Navigator program, if that's all right. I was just wondering, I know that these are classroom teachers performing this function. I wonder, are they receiving additional compensation for taking on those additional responsibilities?
So the Navigator program can consist of any school staff member. And I'll just remind us of kind of the structure this is very similar to. Those of you familiar with our Academies of Nashville structure, we have had in there kind of the advisor role, the mentor-mentee role. We've had our teaming structure that was in place. We have a similar process that's been leveraged in many of our middle schools. So this is, again, the focus is the individual touch for students so that they can receive that individualized attention and resource connection, given the collaborative referrals that we're seeing. But the intent here, again, is to assign smaller groups of students to teachers. That's why we've expanded to just about any adult in the building to assist so that we can continue those relationships and those connections with students. So there is not additional compensation. This is a role that we play with our students, and it's important, particularly during this time that we're navigating, that we carve out time and resources to connect with students individually. I will also share a story about a month ago, this meeting with the teacher's cabinet, and it was a time for them to share anything with me. What do you want to share? What questions do you have? And the very first comment that was shared with me from a teacher was her reflection on the Navigator role. Initially, hearing about it and thinking that, ooh, that could be time-consuming. But after connecting with one student in particular, the amount of impact she was able to have with that student, just in, and the family, just in a five or six-minute conversation, was just the greatest impact she felt like she could have because of what the family was on the verge of and her ability to connect them with resources. And so while it appears, it is time-consuming, but it is so important and is so critical to the work that we're doing right now to make sure that every student counts and we're connecting with every student every day. To the point that Carrie made, you know, we've got to become really comfortable with leading with innovation. And our goal from the very beginning was making sure that, of course, our students were safe, but that we were also providing a high-quality learning experience for them, but that we were meeting the socio-emotional learning needs of all of our students. And so through the lens of innovation and the expertise of our educators, we did launch the Navigator program that was very familiar to most schools because they have something similar. But it was important that we had an organized, structured effort as a district to connect with every student.
Thank, I mean, I appreciate it. I know my, my senior daughter had a pep in her step after talking with her navigator, so I've seen it in action. And I'm very appreciative during this time of the additional attention to the mental and emotional health and well-being of, especially of our teenagers, because I do think they are struggling significantly right now.
Dr. Abba McKinney?
Oh, I have a follow-up about the Navigator program. For those students or families who have not connected with a Navigator, how do they go about making that connection? We have had some conversations with different families recently where that may not, that connection may not exist. So how, how would, who would they need, what's the process towards connecting with a Navigator?
Well, the first thing, again, I'll highlight is the dashboard that Ms. Randolph mentioned because it allows us to see how many students we're connecting with, which students we're connecting with, and the resources that are made available. But if a family has a question about who their student's navigator is, follow the same process as you would with collecting other school-level information, reaching out to teacher, principal, counselor. They will easily be able to identify and connect families with their navigator. I'll also put in a plug, families, if you've not heard from us, please make sure we have your most updated information, because we are using the information that's in our student management system to reach out to families. And we're constantly kind of pushing out, making sure we're updated as well so that we can stay connected. But if, for some reason you haven't connected, reach out to the school, principal, teacher, counselor, the team will be standing ready to assist.
Thank you. Mrs. Tyler?
I have a question about the MAP scores. So we know that the MAP scores are off clearly. How can we reliably use it to study growth if we can't rely on the validity of it?
To my earlier point, there are definitely situations that we know the data's not, not consistent with what we've seen in other places. However, after going through the data pretty thoroughly over the last few weeks, I do feel confident in saying for the vast majority of our students, as a, as a universal screener, and it may not be perfect, but for most students, it's going to give us a pretty good idea of the specific skills, standards that students have mastered. And that's the primary purpose of a universal screener, to help us identify which students need progress monitoring, additional follow-up. However, when we see scores that, like the kindergarten, first-grade scores, what we've encouraged is anything that doesn't look consistent with other things you're seeing in classroom observations, other assessments that are being administered, we need to do additional follow-up. We have other assessments that have, that are available to us that we use for progress monitoring, for follow-up with students. And we've encouraged wherever there's a missing score or a score that, that we have flagged to do additional assessments. This, again, is one data point. But, you know, if I look at the data from grades probably four through middle school, there, there are a few exceptions, but we have, we already have a lot of data on most of those students already over multiple years that we can fall back on. Where the concern is, is for those younger students. And we knew that it was going to be a challenge in a remote setting for those students. So us, you know, over, the testing ended in mid-September, but we've asked that, as part of our multi-tiered systems of support, we continue to assess and monitor students. With, we purchased other, other instruments to, to allow us to do some of that, but it's still going to be a challenge where we're not in-person. And those lower grades where students have come back, well, we should have better data. But we're going to, you know, it's going to be an ongoing challenge where we're in a remote setting. But students are connecting with, you know, teachers are connecting with students every day, they're observing them, and they're completing assignments and the conversations they're having. Those are, those may be the most valid data points we have for those students.
Okay. Well, I guess I kind of have a follow-up in either one of you. So if, especially for those younger kids, if we're really relying more on those kind of teacher-driven, like paying attention to them, and that's a more valid touch point.
And classroom assessments that the teachers are-
Yeah, exactly. Yes, all of those. What would the continued benefits be of doing future MAP scores for those kids, knowing that they're going to continue to be off? And why can't we free that time up for just more teaching for those grades?
That's a very valid question and something that we've, we delayed, we normally would have administered a second test in November, and we've pushed that back to January. But I will say that with our kindergarten and first-grade testing this year, we were not charged for this first assessment by the vendor. They gave this to us as an opportunity, knowing that we and other districts across the country are in a virtual space. As one other indicator of data, now we're going to have to make some decisions on whether we want to continue for all of those K in one students or not, or look at other measures. But that is a conversation we will, we will have.
Great.
I could add-
Yeah, jump in.
Tyler, we, we also, through our special ed processes, we have to use a universal screener multiple times a year to identify students and follow the RTI manual that's set in state law. So we do have an obligation to follow, to have a universal screening mechanism, and it is central to our MTSS process for identifying students for supports as well. So your point is very well taken, as Paul mentioned, as far as maximizing our teaching time and using the results in meaningful ways. And can't stress enough, through our MTSS process and that supports, that that's just as meaningful as the MAP data will ever be. But there, there is some benefit to having those touch points throughout the year and that universal screening process that we have to adhere to.
Before, we were using the MAP for universal screeners. What did we use?
I'll have to let Paul talk.
We were using FastBridge. It's also a normed assessment. It, it's a, it's a good assessment in those early grades, but it's, it's a little more difficult in a remote setting with young children. And so, but we, we do have FastBridge available for progress monitoring purposes, potentially, along with some iReady and Language Lab and some other assessments that could potentially fill in gaps. But to Dr. Bellamy's point, we are required to do some kind of standard, universal screening. If we don't trust the data from that screening, then our obligation is to continue to progress monitor with other measures.
And as, as was mentioned, part of that adjustment was the second window being pushed back until after the start of the second semester.
I'm glad you said that. I'd like a little more clarification on the thought process for moving it to January. I'm not sure I'm understanding the reasoning behind that. And also, how will the process look at that point? Like, what, what improvements will be made to ensure that we're not getting these sort of false results?
Well, the, the thinking was, in part, with, with the anticipated return of students in October and, and the timing of everything, a little more stability. First of all, we had to extend the initial window because of testing in smaller groups. So that was one thought. And then the fact that we still had, had students who had not completed testing, and we would do follow-up with them as needed, as our universal screener. But the response from our schools was, give us some time to get in a stable environment before we continue. We normally look at January as a mid-year time, even though we've tested in November, we've had a universal screening place that, that's been focused on January anyway, using multiple sets of data at that point. Hopefully, we'll have more students back in buildings in January. But as far as how we'll continue, it'll probably still be a combination of online testing for some students and hopefully testing in buildings for others. Again, we're talking about primarily those early grades where, where the concerns lie.
Hold on one second. All right.
Thank you. So my questions are for you as well, Dr. Chang, and maybe for you, Mason. So let me make sure. Okay, so when's the next one? So the next one's been moved from November to January, and we've, we've covered that. I think we've covered that pretty well. And then on the additional assessments that we've encouraged teachers to use, have we given guidance on what those additional assessments need to be? Or are they classroom-based, professional-based on their experience with that student?
The district has, has provided additional assessments for intervention purposes and progress monitoring, and our curriculum and instruction staff have, have worked that, have rolled that out with teachers. We've, anecdotally, we've heard some very good comments about those tools. They typically do provide some normative data on students, but also can drill down to some specific skill gaps. Those are used for students who typically score low on, on our universal screener and, where we have to do additional monitoring to see if interventions are working. Again, if we don't trust the universal screening data, then these are a follow-up that we can use to, to give us another data point on the student's achievement level.
For the upcoming test in January, do we have any plans to, I guess, create like a, some type of training tool for parents, particularly in that virtual world? Once again, anecdotally. I mean, I was a past teacher, my children are in the grade that I taught, and so I felt pretty knowledgeable on how to proctor that test in a virtual way, but it was still even difficult for myself. A common thing I had to remind myself is, you only state the question, only state the question. But I think there's a lot of, you know, unrecognized bias within parents to help kind of figure out, what's the comfort level here? Do you know how to use this mouse, particularly in the beginning? Those kinds of things. And so do we have any plans in January of creating some type of clear, concise, and also consistent among all the schools and grade levels messaging for parents of kind of, here's how this is supposed to work, and here's your role in this?
What I can say is that first, we started with the vendor NWA, and they provided some materials that they have for parents, but then we expanded on that. We were one of the first districts in the country to administer remotely, and we were actually asked by the vendor NWA to, to do some sessions with other districts. And, and we shared materials that we had developed and continue to develop. We, we have a Schoologee group of teachers and educators who have been sharing materials that they've developed, and we'll, we're trying to integrate that as, as part of the process. But we've, you know, we're going to have challenges regardless, we know that. There's still technical concerns, too, that we'll have to deal with. One of the challenges we have is that in terms of monitoring or proctoring remotely, we, we don't have multiple devices available for a teacher to observe and, and keep the environment with a lockdown browser secure. But, you know, we, there were some lessons learned from this fall that we're trying to share, and we, we had some positive feedback, for instance, on how some schools were reaching English learners that we shared with other schools. This Schoologee group has been an attempt to share, to share with our educators best practices. But we'll, we'll continue to look at, and, and we're talking regularly with other districts as they roll out their assessments and sharing materials. We've shared with Indianapolis some things we were doing that, that they've utilized. We're hoping to see from other districts things that might be working to reach families. I don't want to promise that it's all going to go smoothly. We know that that's not likely, but we do hope to, to make it a little easier on everyone going forward.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that, that we're not working in silos as always. It's not preferred. And then my, I guess one of my final questions is, is for our exceptional ed students, was there any difficulty being able to provide any accommodations through their IEP in that virtual setting? I know some of our students have, are able to have accommodations, depending on their five or four IEPs. Did we, were we able to provide those in this situation?
Yes. We, we typically have students who test even in a classroom setting with, with the accommodations that are available online. For instance, an audio recording rather than, we typically don't have people reading the test to a child, we have an audio piece. So yes, we were able to accommodate accommodations. That being said, the monitoring of those, you know, virtually might be a little bit of an issue if a technical problem arose. I had about six staff members of mine that stayed on Teams all during these five weeks of testing available to teachers as they ran into issues. And they were pretty much non-stop communicating with families as, I'm sorry, with educators, helping families as things arose and trying to sort out problems that occurred. But accommodations issues, generally, we feel good about.
Okay. And then I guess lastly, I am, I'm really glad that we have pushed out this Navigator process. I think it's a good step in the direction for lots of our different services that we provide, be it whether a consistent message of how to do something that we're relying on a lot of parents to help us with in this virtual space, to whether it's consults, to all kinds of things. I think it's a really good idea. And to me, it's something that I would like for us as a board, and of course, as a central office, and Dr. Battle, to continue to consider providing even outside of this virtual world, whenever that may be, and that we continue these services and provide- whenever that may be, and that we continue these services and provide that additional touchpoint to students and families. I think it's important for not only our social-emotional focus that we have, but also just for continued best practices. And I hope that we do that.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Demond McKenney.
Yes. Can I have Dr. Changus again?
Ask Dr. Battle.
Oh?
I said, ask Dr. Battle.
Oh, may I have?
If you tell us what your question is, and I'll make sure you got the right, he probably, what is that question?
Yeah, so my question around learning, so my question stems around learning loss in our testing to make sure that we're closing that achievement gap or learning loss that's occurring with students. Has there been any thought, and this may be a big ask, but I just want to put it out there, about our virtual students maybe coming in to test in the building to be able to proctor during that time? And like I said, I know it's a big ask, but I want to just kind of put it on the floor on what that looks like so that we can get some accurate data to be able to really address where our students are and do the progress monitoring that's needed.
Can I, I'll take a first stab at responding. So first of all, we did have schools who were being very creative and innovative in creating space for students who, either they were having issues connecting, or if it was a proctoring issue, that were creative in bringing students in individually or in small pods. I think what we are seeing and experiencing is, you know, based upon the decision of our families with regards to learning virtually or in person, we do have many, many families who don't feel quite comfortable with that yet. So it's going to be important for us to empower our school teams, to continue to be creative and innovative, providing those opportunities to families who choose, but also shoring up the virtual proctoring, because we will have a number of families who will opt not to come into the physical space for actual testing. You're welcome.
Anyone else?
I have one more. I just wonder, what is an SEL outcome? Like, what would that look like?
So, in utilizing our CASL standards, skills that we're looking for, we're looking at those intentionally by grade level of students. And what we're looking for, both in the virtual and in-person place for demonstrating their social-emotional learning skillset. So there's a continuum. And so we're being very strategic in, you know, what should we be assessing and looking for? What are those look-for's for a kindergartner versus a 10th grader? So the social-emotional learning awareness, self-regulation, a lot of times in this space, we just only focus on attendance and behavior, and we want to be a little more intentional than that, given that some of our students are physically not in our buildings. And so, we will continue to focus on attendance on an individual basis. We will continue to focus in on discipline. But the reality is, when it comes to discipline referrals, we have a small percentage of our students who fall into that category with referrals. We've got to continue to focus on the disparities that we see. But we also want to make sure that we're supporting all students with regards to developing their social-emotional learning skills. And so, we're going to call that out based upon the grade level of the student and that continuum given our CASL standards.
Thank you. Mrs. Elrod?
Thank you. I wanted to go back to technology and state that I am really glad and appreciate Dr. Battle's, one, listening to me, because I was pretty like, we've got to get these teachers their laptops. And so, I really appreciate your support, and not only being patient with my request, but also acting upon it, and also, of course, just you knowing that yourself. And so, I appreciate that we're providing them, that they were an increase in what the laptops can handle in that capacity. What is the thought process on how long these laptops will last? And are we going to have to do these professional-grade laptops again? Is this something that we anticipate needing to budget for with an increase, you know, increased usage and an increase of type of laptop? Is there something that we need to budget for, have on our minds? And I guess that may be also true for paraprofessionals and the laptops that they're receiving as well.
Yes. When I was speaking earlier, I said the fiscal impact of a one-to-one environment, and that is also on our teacher laptops. As we're putting forward the plan, we have the teacher laptops in the proposal on a three-year replacement, and student laptops on a four-year replacement. So that would be 25% of our fleet for students every year, which has a fairly big cost. And so, we'd be looking at buying close to 2,000 teacher laptops a year also, every year. Once we get them on a cycle, we don't want to buy them all every three years. We want to get them phased in, so we're only buying a percentage every year.
So, I want to make sure that I understood you correctly. So it's teachers will start in three years, start purchasing 2,000 units a year?
Actually, we would start prior to the three years, so that we would have them in place.
For that three-year turnover. Okay. Okay, so that is something that we need to consider for budgeting for spring?
Yes, very much so.
Got it. Okay, and students would be on four years. Okay. And do we know how many approximate, well, that's 25% of our students. I can figure that out. Okay. And, thank you, Mr. Renfro. And then, I have one more question about communication. So I appreciate particularly, I mean, social media for what it's worth. I know that that's a place that a lot of people get their information. And so, I know that we have had a, really, a significant increase in using that, and I think it's a wise move. Do we have any plans of, like, focusing in one area within social media, or do we want to focus on communicating to parents through email? Do we have a communication plan on how we think is the best way to reach our parents, where we get to see the best return on value, and like, what we prioritize when we have important information that comes out, like last Friday?
I mean, all of the above. The idea is that we try to reach people at the mediums that they go to. You know, I am a person that gets a lot of spam email, and so I don't check it a lot. But I do check Twitter. And some people check Facebook, some people check Instagram. Students especially check a lot of Instagram. So our goal is to have pretty much every broad communication communicated on every platform to the extent possible. So that's where we're at right now. We have a great social media person, and Carrie Weir, who does that really well, in making sure that all of our social media channels are updated frequently. And then, we try to send out email updates. We want to limit those call-outs and emails so that we don't over-saturate people to the point that they decide to unsubscribe. Another thing that's happening with this political season. So I think that we want to make sure that we are being very efficient with the use of call-out emails and making sure that when we have a chance, we combine those into multiple things so that people aren't getting inundated there. But social media, there's not a limit on that, really, for the most part. So, at least for Twitter and for some of those other things. So, I don't know if that answers your question or not, but...
It did. It was mostly, I know we have lots of different kinds of messages, whether they be district-specific, or, you know, we had the message that came out about buses, you know, from the debate, to whether the decision that was made on Friday. And so, I wanted just to kind of make sure, were we prioritizing one model or one mode of communication over another? How are we making sure that we don't over-saturate parents and they stop ignoring, they start not checking their voicemails?
Yeah.
Okay. My hope is with our communications, is that we can, of course, communicate with parents as fast as possible, as we all do. I think in our virtual space, we probably have more difficulties doing that, as people are just more attentive to the just new smorgasbord of concerns and things that are now on everyone's plate. So I look forward to us to monitoring, like, the opening rates that we have, and making sure that we're getting a good return on whatever is the best one, and trying to monitor that and reach the most parents that way. So I appreciate you having such data on it.
All right, thanks.
Ms. Pooja Walker?
Quickly, I know, are these elementary students who got laptops, are they bringing those back and forth to school if they're learning in person? I'm just worried they're going to drop them. Do they have cases, or do they come with sleeves or anything? I'm not kidding, right?
We're very worried they're going to drop them, too. And I said that earlier. We will have breakage in this. Yes, they are transporting them back and forth, because we do not know when we may have to quarantine a class or quarantine any section of the school. We are working to get sleeves for transportation for the laptops currently.
Okay.
Yes, and it is a must right now, because there are so many unknowns. You know, I think I mentioned last week, even with the contact tracing, contact tracing goes into the evening, into the weekend, and at any point in time, we may have to notify a student or a family of the 10-day or 14-day rule. We're embarking upon inclement weather phase, and so we want our students to be prepared. We also can't afford for them to be just left at home, because part of the training and teaching and integration, particularly if they're in person, needs to happen in that face-to-face time with their teachers. So they are transporting them back and forth. We've shifted our plans. We've been planning for this for a long time, never really thought we'd get here so quickly. We've shifted our plans to accommodate that, as well as getting protective gear for all of our devices.
Any other thoughts or questions?
I do.
All right, Dr. Demond McKenney?
Yes. So, first nine-week grades have come out for students and families across the city. And just want to ask, has there, what, has there been any type of support given to families or students during this time who have potentially failed classes due to the remote learning and the transition that has taken place? And what are we doing to support them as they go into the second quarter?
Yes, and I see my team looking at me, because they're like, we spend a lot of time in this space, really monitoring where we are with our pass failure rate, and making sure that we have supports in place on the ground for students who are in the either content or credit recovery space. I'm not quite credit yet, but more so content space. And so, our school teams have been on top of that particular data. They've been working closely with their executive directors, Chief Bellamy and his team, in monitoring that and making sure that we have supports on the ground to help students recover any content that they've missed. I also wanted to just mention and acknowledge that anticipation of that, particularly at the high school level, because they're on the four-by-four block, our team started working towards that many, many weeks ago. Ever since the very first progress report time, we called a team together to make sure that we had a plan in place to provide, not only in the virtual space, but in-person opportunities for tutoring and additional support for our students. So if parents or students have questions with regards to their options, given the courses that they're enrolled in, please, 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 again, reach out to your school, principal, counselor, teachers. They will be able to connect them with the appropriate resources.
Other questions or thoughts before we move on? All right, then we will move towards announcements. Thank you, Dr. Battle and staff, for these updates and all the hard work you continue to do. It is announcements.
Are you starting?
Huh?
What?
Oh, yeah, we're starting with Dr. Gentry, I'm sorry.
You don't have any. I got you. Okay, I'm here, I'm here, okay. I do want to say, really important, if you have seniors, if you love a senior, get them to get their Tennessee Promise application turned in. So important, due by Monday. But I also want to have the caveat that our undocumented students cannot do Tennessee Promise. And every year, I have to encourage our counselors and our staff to not pressure students to have this 100% goal. It puts undocumented students in a very difficult position to have to come out and state something, or put a false number down, or put a bunch of zeros. So, just begging that people are really, really thoughtful about that, until we get immigration reform or in-state tuition for undocumented students. I also encourage everybody to become a Tennessee Promise mentor, and you can sign up now through TennesseeAchieves.org. It's a low-level commitment with a high yield. You get six students in metro schools, could be one of your high schools, and you meet with them virtually at this point, and you really help make sure to just troubleshoot. It's such a worthwhile endeavor. And then the last thing I want to say is, yesterday, I got to serve on a panel with Dr. Battle and Dr. Bellamy and Dr. Turner for the Academies of Nashville Study Visit. And so, I just want to give a shout-out to Alignment and all the partners, and students, and staff, and principals who helped make it a success. We had over, almost 30 districts participate from across the country. We had people from Scotland participating. We had, so the greatest hit was the student panel, apparently. So anyway, thanks to all the partners who made that possible, and to Donna Gilli.
All right, Dr. Bretina Demond McKenney?
Yes. Couple of things. I want to first thank our principals for Principal Month of the year. I mean, the Principal Month, and just really acknowledge the work that our principals are doing to lead their schools and their communities, and really acknowledge the work that they have done to go above and beyond to make sure we're meeting the needs of our students and families. I'd also like to take a moment to thank our teachers and support staff for the work that they do day in and day out, both in-person and in-virtual. They have gone above and beyond in ensuring that learning is taking place within our schools, or among our students, and within our schools. So I want to also acknowledge them as well, in the role that they play, and our support staff who have stepped in and assumed jobs that they wouldn't nor nearly do to make this work as a community. And so, I really want to acknowledge how you, Dr. Battle, and your team are really leading to ensure that we are going out of our way to ensure that we're meeting the needs of our community. And that's what we're here for. I do have a public statement that I'd like to make, and it may, if you could give me grace for a minute to make this statement. As many of you know or may have heard, I was publicly targeted after our last meeting and attacked by a colleague and fellow board member in an effort to sabotage my run for reelection to the school board in this November election. I am a strong proponent of free speech. But as community leaders, we have a responsibility in how we craft our messages and convey our opinions to the community. The words and methods of targeting used by this colleague were aggressive, crass, and lack civility. As online bullying reaches frightening heights in our country, among our kids, and our community, we, as metro school board members, should lead by example, not wallow in the mire. While the rhetoric used by this person was in itself unprofessional, I am especially appalled at the insensitive, at the insensitive and callous comments used to invoke the memory of our former school board member Anna Shepherd as a tool to do so. Anna Shepherd was not only a respected school board member, but she was a loved member of the District Four community, and also a friend, in the Donaldson, Hermitage, and Old Hickory community. I have received numerous calls and messages from our community members who were extremely hurt and offended by those actions. I have personally spoken with Larry Shepherd, Anna's husband, and I would just like to take this moment to publicly acknowledge the hurt, her family, friends, and community, many of who are still mourning her loss. As a school, as a board of directors, we are elected to earn the public trust of our community and the constituents who elected us to office. When we undermine and attack one another in public, it erodes the public trust we have in our ability to govern. There has to be a level of decorum in our actions, our discourse, decisions, as well as disagreements. This and any form of bullying should never occur. We are a reflection of the leadership we would like to see in our students, staff, and community. And one of every five students now are reporting bullying that's existing. And I just ask, moving forward as a school board, as a community who we want to be the reflection of for our students, that we be mindful in our actions and embrace the passion of civility, consensus, and respect. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Dr. Demond McKenney. Mrs. Elrod?
Thank you. So first, I as well would like to echo the many thanks that we have to our principals that help us be the successful school system that we are, and not only supporting our students, but our staff, and the very, very many roles that they serve. I also would like to say that I am so thankful for Atlee Tyree, who is at Haywood, and I'm glad that she received some recognition, as it is very, very well-deserved. And I want everybody to remember that, of course, and I think going along with the communications conversation of just saturation, we probably all are aware, but I hope that everyone is aware that early voting ends this week, and that you're able to vote at some point, as it's a great tool for yourself and for your community. Thanks.
Thank you. And Mrs. Masters?
Thank you. So I just want to, I want to give a little shout-out to our honorary communications member, Megan Mangram, because I know that her live tweeting of our board meetings is, you know, keeping it real for all the folks at home. And I always go home and read through all your tweets. And I always go home and read through all your tweets, so, sorry. I just had to give her a little shout there. And also on the, on the principal, this is also Pencil Foundation's week, where you can be a principal for a day. I'm very excited that I'm going to be a principal for a day for Maplewood High this Thursday. I'm almost as excited as the time I won principal for a day at the school auction at Down Mills Elementary and had Mr. Yates convinced that I was going to do it, instead of letting my kid do it. That was pretty, because I think he was a little scared. So very excited about that program. I also wanted to mention that we had our insurance trust meeting, and MMPS Wellness has won another award, the American Heart Association Project BP Gold Award. And I just have to tell y'all, like, what this means, more than 70% of our MMPS employees who have high blood pressure, it is controlled. It's, I mean, nationwide, it's less than 50% control rate. In Davidson County, we're at like 40%. So that means, I mean, we're doing a good job, at least in that area, of taking care of our teachers and our staff members. So I think that that is exciting and something for us to be proud of. I also just want to say quickly that I am thinking a lot about the many, many staff members and students who have tested COVID-positive, particularly about those who are hospitalized as a result, and that it's just something that, that I'm thinking about every day, and I know that everyone in this room is thinking about every day. And my, my heart and my thoughts are with their families, and I'm hoping for recoveries for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Tyler?
I just want to echo Ms. Masters the same, the same thing, just as far as keeping them in our hearts and making sure that, that we're doing everything we can to support them. So I just want to take the moment to encourage everybody to wear your masks so that we can get back in school. If you are around friends that you have not been quarantining with, or they're not part of a special pod, wear your mask. If you are walking from one place to the other and you know you're going to encounter somebody, wear your mask. This is how we take care of one another.
Thank you. And thank you again to my colleagues for being here, for our central office staff for engaging us in such great conversation, as always. And I ditto to all that my colleagues have said. Thank you to the Nashville community, students, educators, parents, for just working with us and continuing to collaborate. But I do think I have a lot of different thoughts around ethics and our communication, but I understand that as board chair, I have to be a bit more representative of all of my colleagues and not just my individual thoughts. So I will say with that in mind, that we will be scheduling a board retreat for December that I do expect all of my colleagues to be able to attend. I'll send out a poll to make sure it's day, there, it is a day that works for you all or for all of us. And at that time, we will also be talking through the establishment of the Ethics Committee, should we ever in the future need to review board actions or conversations. I think I would rather we be proactive in establishing that than reactive. So I'll muzzle myself and say thank you all, and be there, no further business. Good night.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.